Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 4th, 2025 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present tonight. I don't believe we had anybody register for public comments tonight. So our first item of business will be to approve minutes of the May 21st, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. We've all had a chance to review those prior to the meeting. Any additions or corrections?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve and second, Ms. Fulcham. Ms. Averwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to pass this. Tonight, we have one public hearing, and it is a zoning application to amend the existing PCD zoning on Dejarnet Place PCD on approximately 23.7 acres located along Dejarnet Lane. Swanson Developments LP is the applicant. And Mr. Blumley is going to present this for Ms. Smith, who is, I understand, graduating from Leadership Rutherford tonight, so.
Yes, yes, we extend our congratulations to Ms. Smith as she graduates from Leadership Rutherford. So I will be presenting for her tonight, and this is for the Dejarnet Place Planned Commercial Development located along the north side of Dejarnet Lane, just to the east of Memorial Boulevard and located across the street from Sportscom and the airport. You can see on the map in front of you, directly to the east of the subject property is the Bradford Place subdivision, and to the northeast is the Hampton subdivision, both single-family residential subdivisions. And a little bit to the southeast is the North Springs subdivision. As is often the case with planned developments, when they are approved by planning commission and council, that, you know, there are certain conditions, certain market conditions, certain things that the developer is looking for. And oftentimes, when those planned developments take a long time to be developed, the developer finds that there are changes in market conditions and modifications to the planned development that they need to make to, in their opinion, keep it successful and viable. And so the history on this particular planned development is quite, quite long. It was approved by the city council back in 2008. And I believe it was not until about 2017 or 2018 that Swanson, the owner and developer of the property, decided to move forward once again with the development. And at that point, they moved forward with their construction plans, and over the course of the next several years, they constructed the infrastructure. The plat has been recorded, so that the public streets that are located within the development, which are called Sword Court and Lido Court, are both public streets that have been dedicated by the developer, and utilities have been installed, the potential pond has been installed. So, all that being said, there is nothing that has gone vertical on it yet, and you all have seen no site plan for any development on any of the individual lots that have been created. I will say, this is probably one of the most asked about, as a, as a planning department employee, one of the most asked about developments, because of all the people that live around there and that drive by it and they want to know what's, what it's going to be developed as. So, as a planned development back in 2007, there were certain requirements and certain uses that were permitted with that particular approval. And so, they are back before you today, because what, the changes that they want to make are too significant for a minor deviation to be approved by staff, and it requires an amendment to their planned development zoning. So just briefly, and Mr. Roundtree with Huddleston Steel will go into more detail on this, but the changes to the pattern book are primarily the following. So they have modified the permitted use tables for each of the areas. So there are, there are what they're calling five lots, lots A, B, C, D, and E, and I'll show those to you. So you see, A and B, those were originally, in the, in the 2008 planned development, were approved for primarily retail uses. C and D were approved primarily for office uses, and E was approved primarily for office or self-storage. And so what they are doing is, they are modifying the uses in each one of those areas, adding some uses that are not currently permitted, many of which have been added to our use chart and our zoning ordinance. So for example, you'll see the, the uses in yellow are the ones that they are proposing to add. So like artisan use is a new use that we added in the zoning ordinance a couple of years ago, that is, you know, kind of like a crafting or a light manufacturing that is seen as, as being, you know, appropriate outside of industrial zoning districts, you know, someone making handmade jewelry, or, or someone making t-shirts, or something that, where it's just a small operation. So they added that, they added artisan brewery, which is a, which is our smallest brewery category, fitness studio of less than 5,000 square feet, grocery stores, restaurant drive-in, restaurant specialty, restaurant specialty limited, a specialty restaurant would be like a donut shop or an ice cream store, a specialty shop, and an artisan winery, which is our smallest category of winery. And they also have, they've put in as explicit prohibited uses, and it's, and it's not necessarily necessary to include prohibited uses, but it just kind of reinforces that those uses are prohibited, because whatever is not in the list is not technically permitted. But they have included vape shop, fueling station, like a gas station, and institutional group assembly as prohibited uses. And the institutional group assembly would be like a church or a school. And the primary, primary reason for that is to, to not have such a use where there are large gatherings of people in the flight path of the runway. So they're modifying the permitted use chart. They are proposing to modify the building heights and set very specific building heights that have been set in conjunction with Mr. Gurkey at our airport, who was, who was here today, if you have any questions for him. They were, Ms. Smith and the applicant worked very closely with Mr. Gurkey to establish those height limitations in, in, in compliance with federal recommendations and regulations. And that includes both the buildings and the landscaping.
So are you saying they are increasing the height, or y'all are just changing it based upon regulations that are in force today?
I, I would have to go back and look at the 2007 pattern book, which I can do, actually have that with me. But I think the primary reason is to, is to specify what those maximum building heights will, will be. And that includes not only the buildings themselves, but any protrusions on the top of the building. The design standards, while in the 2007, 2008 pattern book, there were specific building elevations and design standards, and really what, what we're replacing those with is, you know, because back then, we didn't have the citywide design guidelines. And a lot of what is proposed here in this development is speculative, so they're, they really don't want to lock themselves into specific building elevations, but they want to be able to commit to a certain level of quality. And now that we have that quality in our citywide design guidelines, they are, they are stating that they will comply with the design guidelines. And so also, they are, on page 18 of the pattern book, they are integrating other standards with, with respect to the, the airport being located directly to the south for the sake of air safety, including in that is a 40-foot navigation easement along the front of the two front lots, so that nothing gets built. And that 40-foot navigation easement is something that they've done in consultation with our staff and with Mr. Gurkey as well. So the future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 amended comprehensive plan recommends that this develop as a business office park. Business office park is primarily office-type uses with some limited commercial uses. Offices are permitted in, in this PCD and will continue to be permitted in this PCD. So there is, I'd say it probably allows a little bit more than limited commercial uses, but in some respects, it's consistent with the, the future land use map recommendation. Mr. Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel has a PowerPoint presentation that he would like to give you, then we'll need to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to council. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have before or after the, the public hearing.
Thank you, Matthew. Commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Civil Engineering. I'm here representing Joe Three, Swanson Development regarding this project. And as Matthew mentioned, this is an existing PCD that we have modified to bring it up to kind of current standards from an architectural standpoint, and also working jointly with the airport, trying to make sure we're really respecting the flight line and future expansion of the runway as well. So with that in mind, I'll just go over a brief presentation to kind of get you oriented and make sure if there's any questions, I can do my best to answer them. Let's see here, so we're there. Okay, so y'all have it on your screen. Come on now, there we go. All right, so as Matthew mentioned, the properties are currently zone PCDs, we're asking for an amendment to that. And as it's located directly north of the, so the north is McKnight Park, and I believe we have some folks from the adjacent neighborhood as well, over at Bradford Place. And directly behind this flight path is, basically, the primary concern we've been working with through the process is making sure that if the runway expands from the Murfreesboro Airport, that we make accommodations from the development side. And I do want to say, I appreciate the staff giving us the opportunity now with this new kind of layout, that we're not so specific that it gives our clients the flexibility to, to kind of deal with the clients as they come. I mean, obviously, the two roads are in place, the layout's in place, the stormwater management's in place, but it gives us some flexibility from the development side, that as people come along, Swanson Corporation can really work with those clients in terms of the various zones. As Matthew mentioned, it's projected for business park and the future land use plan, and we feel like we're consistent with that effort. Overall, the, the roads I can mention are in place, the Sword Court and Lido Court are already there, existing. We do have a Stub Street, Lido Court goes out to the west, in anticipation that, you know, one day that will develop for commercial as well. That's just jumpy. So there are, there are five different zones that we're looking at for development, A and B, to Matthew's point. That will be a height restriction of 30 feet, and that's in conjunction with the airport, making sure that as the planes go lower towards the runway, basically, the landscaping and the buildings themselves kind of stagger with the flight line of the airport. C and D allow us to go to 35-foot height, and E is up to 45-foot height, which is really standard for CF zoning. The green area, the common area, is an existing stormwater area that's basically comprehensive for the whole development. That's going to remain, that buffer line along that side is going to remain untouched, that's in place. So we think some of the concern is going to be about buffers on B and D. So that's one of the things we want to bring your attention to, the buffer lines along B and D. So along B, right now, we have a type C buffer, and along D, we have a type C buffer, but they have different max heights. So B has us with a 20-foot max height, which limits us to certain types of plant material. Type, the, the orange, type D, is a 35-foot max. And I've spoken with Joe Three already about that, about some options we may have if, with those buffers, I mean, the buffer type C is consistent with at least two rows of evergreen. There is some existing vegetation, there's some large trees along that property line, so those are in place already. So I think the effort would be working closely with the neighbors, trying to figure out exactly if there's any holes in the buffer that they currently have, and going ahead and enhancing those areas where there's, makes me lesser vegetation existing. So in the past with that, we always try to keep the existing vegetation, so we're not just clear-cutting and, you know, having to rebuild everything. So it's really a matter of making sure that the existing buffer with existing vegetation enhanced by new vegetation satisfies the goals of a type C buffer with those height The airport protection was a very important part of our process. There's language in the pattern book, as Matthew mentioned, that gets into those details. I can dive into those if you'd like, but it's a specific page dedicated towards that end, and really, it does relate to, primarily relates to heights. Allow the uses, this is really where I think we've taken a stride forward as a city, that before we got into having to get very specific at this point with a speculative zoning, this allows us to have maximum flexibility for the future, as long as, you know, as long as those uses are something that we can agree to, gives us a lot of flexibility from the development side. As Matthew mentioned, the prohibitive uses are really related to the airport and the potential of any sort of risk, a large gathering area. So we can allow a small group gathering, under 50 people, but anything over 50 people would be prohibited on this site. And that's, you know, that's just a thought if there's any sort of issue with any kind of aircraft, you know, crashing in this area, it's not going to take out en masse of a group of people. So really, group size is important, so nothing over 50 people. And then gas stations, of course, you know, if there's any sort of flammable situation where an airplane would hit that and create another problem. So that was really related to the airport, those prohibitive uses. The vape shop, you know, that's really related to the neighborhood, so, and if there's any other prohibitive uses, the neighbors would want us to have. In terms of those type uses, we see those a lot, tattoo parlors, vape shops, anything like that, that's related closely to a neighborhood, we'd be more than willing to pull out as a negative use. And with that, it's again, it's a brief presentation. I know there's some neighbors here that have some concerns that they'd like to express. I'll be available after the presentation. If you have any questions for me now, I'll try to do my best to answer their questions. But if you have anything for me, I'm available to you.
Just have one question, again, regarding the buffer zones. And I know we've got the maximum heights in there for all the trees that'll be in there or shrubs, so. But is there a minimum height? Because in this case, I mean, the neighbors are interested in what's actually buffering them, you know, so it's not going to be a little two-foot round shrub alternating in there.
Right.
We still want to buffer from them, for them.
Right.
And so right now, all we're doing is listing the, the maximum height they can be, so. How are we addressing that? How does that work? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, normally, I rely on Mr. Barbie for answers to these questions, as our resident landscape guru, but I think they generally require them to be at least six feet in height at planting. And of course, he'll have to review with, with the landscape architect team, when these sites develop, he'll have to review the species that they're proposing, so that they do not exceed that maximum height.
Yeah, get that, just want to make sure they, they do, they're tall enough to.
Yes, so there's, there's a double row, Chairman Jones, with, with six foot height, and Matthew's correct, it'd be, you know, some kind of an evergreen, more than likely, you know, and then there'll be a row of shrubs in addition to that, which is also more of a, you know, an evergreen type of shrub. So there's, there's three layers, and a type C buffer that gives us that advantage of a little density from a screening standpoint.
Great. Anybody else have any questions before we open the public hearing?
I did want to follow up with Mr. Halliburton. I looked at the, the original, excuse me, the original pattern book while Mr. Roundtree was making his presentation, and it doesn't appear that they set maximum building heights, like an actual numerical value in the original pattern book, but they were like, they were essentially graphically representing that the, the retail buildings on the two front lots, two front parcels, would be one-story, and the buildings on the office and self-storage lots would be two-story. Thank you. Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Roundtree.
Welcome.
If there's nothing else, then we will.
We have the opportunity to speak.
We're, we're getting ready to open the public hearing, and at that point, we will ask everybody, anybody to come forward that would like to speak on this item. If you do want to speak on the item, you will come forward to the podium, you will state your name and your address. We do ask that you make all your comments regarding the application directly to the planning commission, and not to other members of the audience or anything like that. You are limited to three minutes with your comments, so with that, if anybody would like to come forward and speak, we are opening the public hearing, so please come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. My name is Mike Schleicher. I live in Bradford Place subdivision, behind the area marked as B.
Mr. Schleicher, could you, could you state your address for the record?
706 Middleton Lane, Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Thank you.
In 1996, when I built my home in Bradford Place, we built the home in a residential area, assuming that it'd be a residential area in front of us and behind us. I'm a firm believer that anyone who owns property should be able to do what they, what they want to do with their property, as long as they're following the correct zoning for an area. The changes that they're suggesting today, to the plan that was approved several years ago, are fairly significant. Years ago, as a young man, I worked in restaurants, and I know that restaurants can be smelly, they can bring in rodents, they can bring in a lot of traffic. You know, we talked about, just a few moments ago, we didn't want churches in, in the area because of too much traffic. Well, if you put a McDonald's or another restaurant behind my house, I'm going to literally be able to hear them ordering their french fries, which I don't think was really anything that I could have possibly imagined when we built our home. We also, right now, have quite a bit of traffic issues going on, and I know that ultimately a red light would probably come in handy, but I don't see how they could put a red light at the end of their runway, which is where, you know, this main line, road comes in. So I know all of my Bradford Place neighbors would love to see a little bit more of a red light opportunity for us. Several years ago, and I'll conclude quickly, several years ago, Garrison Cove, which is roughly two miles from our house, they had a similar issue, where they were building a Krogers and a strip center, and I believe that the planning commission and the developers come to the conclusion that one of the ways to mitigate the problems was to build a berm, and the berm, I think, has worked real well for them. The original plan that you guys agreed to for this particular development had trees, but it also had a fence. They didn't mention the fence tonight, but would love to have a berm with a fence on top of it. In any event, I know I've got past my three moments, so I'll say thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for, for coming out tonight and speaking. And we will listen to all the questions that we have tonight from anyone, and then we'll address everything at the end of the public hearing. So who else would like to come up and speak tonight on this item? Come on up.
Thank you, Madam and Council, for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I am also a resident in Bradford Place. My name is Karen Wardle. My address is 738 Middleton Lane. I am within 250 feet of this development. I have the original master plan that was given to Bradford Place from Swanson when they originally decided to do this development. Not so much questions I have this evening, as my concerns, like Mr. Schleicher, we are in a very quiet subdivision, and we would like to keep it that way. This new proposal has drastic changes for us in the neighborhood in reference to noise, lighting, rodents. The original proposal, as Mr. Schleicher had mentioned, was evergreens, which I've actually circled on my copy of the proposal, and we have asked continuously, what is the actual plan going to be? Are we getting a fence? Are we getting evergreens? Are we getting both? We don't have an answer to that. That would make a little bit of a difference, but I personally do not want a restaurant, a brewery, or a winery 250 feet from my home. There are other children and families that have moved into Bradford Place in the last four or five years. A neighborhood turns over every 20 to 30 years. I'm actually also the HOA president for Bradford Place, so I am speaking on behalf of 154 homes that this will eventually affect. As being president for Bradford Place for the last five years, I have asked for a signal at the intersection of Dejarnay and Alexander Boulevard the last four years, and data surveys have been done. It is getting impossible for us to turn left out of Alexander, heading south on Alexander Boulevard, with the schools and different activity, with also new proposal of additional retail space, 88 acres are being developed of Memorial and Haynes. So with this new development coming in, we would definitely, for our safety, for the neighbors in that area, and people in Northwoods as well, would benefit from a traffic signal at that intersection. But going back to this development, we did agree with office spaces and possibly the storage unit, because that would kind of keep the traffic down. Now we're asking to change that, and that would increase the traffic until, what are the business hours of these developments that are coming in? Are restaurants and wineries and grocery stores going to be open after 5:00? Are they going to be open until 10:00 PM? That does affect our quietness, and I would ask, you know, how would you feel if this development was coming in behind your home at 250 feet? Or even the developers, for that matter, because I'm sure they don't live near there. We're also concerned about tax value on what our homes are going to be worth, because this could possibly plummet our investment, and as a homeowner or property owner, this is your primary investment, is your home. And I would hate to see Bradford Place and the adjacent Hamptons, and even some homes on Osborne Lane that that would affect, because as that, as that development comes down into that E section, where the storage units are going to be, that doesn't affect just Middleton Lane, it affects Chase, and also going down into the Hamptons. That retention pond that was set in, that is another issue that Bradford Place has. We have a drainage, we actually have nicknamed it Bradford Lake. I have called the city several times on helping to get that drained. Now we have this retention pond that drains into it. It, it actually gives us more mosquitoes in the neighborhood, and each homeowner has to have that extra cost in fighting those mosquitoes, especially those right around that, that immediate section. We do, as an HOA, sorry, pay for the extra mosquito prevention as well over there. As I was. As I was asking about the development for what I call Bradford Lake, I've been getting mixed signals. Okay, it was placed in Bradford Place by the developer to help drainage, which has now come from the airport, Northwoods, and now this development as well. So it's like constant water and it is sewer water. It's not safe water and we would like it eliminated. So you need to help us to help you in reference to making this decision because this is going to impact us greatly on where we live. Thank you.
Thank you. Did allow a little extra time there since you are the president of the homeowners association. So thank you for coming out tonight. Who else would like to speak? Come on up.
Members, I am Laws Bolden, 358 Dejarnet Lane. Kind of catty corner, second house to the east from the airport. I'm not part of the Bradford Place Association, but somewhat affected, not next door, not as drastically as they are. But I got my notice in the mail, I guess, over the weekend and, and hopped on it as quick as I could to make sure it wasn't, you know, any, I knew it was already zoned for office. And it was my understanding that it was supposed to be single-story when it was zoned back in 2007 and 2008 as an office park, which, you know, offices and residential are pretty compatible. They, you know, the office people come during the day and then they leave and then, you know, the residents come home at night. So that is very compatible with the residents. Not so much drive-through restaurants and 24-hour, 24/7 service industries. I can't think of a single place in Murfreesboro where you would allow, say, for example, a Sonic drive-through within 20 feet of a house lot. You know, if you look at Food Line on Las Casas or you look at the proposed development at Haynes and Memorial, we're looking at 100 or 200 feet that was required buffer. And so I feel like we're, we're flexing a little too much. I'm pro-development. I've been involved in a lot of developments around here. So, you know, I don't want to be too hard on the Swansons, but this, this is an odd request. Originally, the height was at least explained. I don't have a copy of the PUD book, but single-story and 30 feet is two-story. And so if you allow it, you might as well expect it. And so that, that's too high. And right next door to the residence. Hours of operation, I'd like to see something specific about that. You know, the drive-throughs, I just, I can't imagine a drive-through restaurant next to these folks. And 24-hour, seven-day-a-week drive-through, that'd be even worse. I have a kind of a technical question. They're limiting the height of the landscape to 20 feet on lots A and B, yet the building height limitation is 30. I don't quite understand that. I'm also concerned about what is the minimum height, which has been touched on. I like the example of the Kroger at Las Casas with the berm and plantings on top. I've had to do them myself and they work. So that might be a consideration as well. Not only was office more compatible, but the assembly uses are also much more compatible with residents than, than services. It's great living on Dejarnet with the churches and even school. You know, they're, they're in and out there in the morning or noon on Sundays and then gone. So they're really great neighbors, you know, large facilities, I understand, but good neighbors. Another technical question would be, there, there shows on the GIS system variable easements along the shared property line with the Bradford Place. And what's happened to that? And how is the 20-foot buffer affected by the 30-foot existing variable sewer easement? I don't think you're going to be able to put this buffer on it, on top of it. So that's a pretty serious technical question that needs answering, I think. Is the 20 feet in addition to the sewer easement? Has the sewer easement been relocated? And, and because it does say variable. And I guess that's really kind of about it. So if y'all would consider those points, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Who else would like to speak tonight? Uh, no ma'am, sorry. Who else? If you have not spoken, come on up.
Thanks for the opportunity. My name's Tom Bowen. I live at 2622 Chase. And I just want to say to start off with, back in 2013, my wife and I were looking to move to Tennessee. We went to Franklin, Brentwood, Mount Juliet, Lebanon. My Anna lived here most of her life. She passed away about four years ago. She was 97. My family was based out of Woodbury. But of all the places we looked, we decided we wanted to live in Murfreesboro. And in particular Bradford Place. Property we bought was close to the airport, but we thought we could live with that. We never anticipated the growth of this city has its, it's phenomenal what's happened. I like to tell my wife and others that the mentality in Murfreesboro is find a hole, fill a hole. And that's exactly what you guys do. Don't care, just fill a hole. The other folks have addressed most of the similar problems and concerns that I have. The one that wasn't mentioned is lighting. I know that when the Walmart was built, I think that was a primary concern. I think it was related to probably Adam's place. They were concerned about the bright lights of the parking lot. And I know they mitigate it, they have lower standards. It's, and they've got the same thing. They've got buffer zones and everything else. So that would be one question I would have is, because I can go out my front door, stand on my porch and look all the way to Dejarnet, past the retention pond and everything that's open. I mean, when we bought the property, I would have considered that a floodplain. And I never would have anticipated with the proximity of the airport that they would allow building something like this. And I assume that they're going to build and develop the adjacent property. I think that's what, one of, I think he said or something. So you're going to fill that on in even more. It's going to become more congested. And I don't, and the noise with all the trees gone, all that noise from Dejarnet comes right into the subdivision. So those are my major concerns. I hope you take it to light. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Who else would like to speak? Just make your way, make your way up.
Hello, I'm Bobby Fowler, 718 Middleton Lane. My address is probably the first site that's going to be affected by this development. It's the first site coming off of Dejarnet. I will be very close to it. I understand that people needs to develop, develop plans. I also know that people needs to stick to the plans that they developed. We're right in the middle now and we're wanting to change everything. The item that will affect me probably more than anything about the development is going to be the buffer zone. You know, I can sit on my back patio and probably see the rooftop of every one of these buildings that's being built. I didn't move here to be, be living in a partial residential neighborhood. I moved here to be in a primary neighborhood. So the buffer zone is not trees. The buffer zone is not weeds. That's what it is today. I've seen drawings going back, I think, 2008, show beautiful shrubbery in between this development and Bradford Place. I've not heard anything that's been mentioned that they, that they will do anything. And I, I recommend that this be voted down until more, more information is provided about what they will do. If we have a tall enough buffer zone, a berm, shrubbery on top, we can put up with a little bit of the noise that may be coming through them. But we do not want to stand, we do not want to live there with, with no buffer zone. So that'd be one of the first requirements I would put on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Danny Do. I'm the chief analytics officer here at Swanson Development at 1188 Park Avenue. First, I want to thank you, everyone, for allowing my team to present the market data, to support my team's request and to share key insight into the office occupancy trends that have influenced the team's decision of amending this land use beyond office basically permits. I am quite empathetic with all residents concerned, but I'm here to address why the team is looking to expand the office use from a data standpoint. As many of you are aware, the office market has experienced significant changes since the onset of COVID-19. When we look at the office occupancy trend across the nation, we see a clear picture, which is office occupancy has not yet returned to the pre-pandemic level. According to CoStar, one of the leading real estate data provider, the current national office occupancy rate is still 4% below the pre-pandemic level in 2019. Focusing on the Nashville metropolitan statistical area, which includes Murfreesboro, the shift is even more pronounced. Office occupancy has dropped by 7% since COVID, with projections indicating the trend will continue downward through the end of the year. These stats underscore the broader challenges in office demand, both nationally and regionally, driven by the rise of remote and hybrid work models and ongoing shift in office dynamics. Given these evolving challenges in the office market, that's why the Swanson team believes it is prudent and forward-looking to propose this amendment to incorporate a broader range of permitted use. We greatly appreciate your consideration. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, who else would like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and Members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I was probably the only one here that attended that first.
And go ahead and state your name and address, thank you.
Yes, Darlene Schleicher, 706 Middleton Lane. And I'm in Section D. We're directly in the middle of Section D. I was probably the only one in the room that was here when they discussed this initially. I sat in a room with Swanson and at the time, Mr. Ailot. And listened to what they had to tell us. And their, their big sell to us was this is only office buildings. We're not going to do alcohol. You won't have, you know, smoke shops or anything like that. This is, this is strictly going to be office space. And I feel like it's broken faith with us because here we are, you know, down the road and we're already breaking faith and want to put retail behind us. It's very detrimental to our property value. And as retirees, there's actually several of us who are retirees on this street. It's very hard held swallow because it does reduce our, our, our property. And I appreciate you letting me tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Ms. Schleicher. Who else would like to speak?
Good evening, Chair, Commission. Joe Three, 1188 Park Avenue. On the buffer zone, we're fine doing a six-foot, maybe even start at an eight-foot buffer to give a little bit more hedge height, a little bit more clearing, keep the light out. Whenever the developer, the builder comes out to do their initial building, planning is going to have them do a foot candle test. We're only allowed so many foot candles at the edge of the property line, so this would help eliminate the lighting that would be spilling over, bleeding over to the neighbors. As far as the drive-throughs go, I wouldn't want a Burger King. I wouldn't want a Sonic or McDonald's or something like that in my backyard. This is really meant for a Starbucks or a Dunkin' Donuts, something along those lines that's friendly, stop in, you drop your kids off at school, you stop in, you get your coffee, your donut, and then you head on to work. I don't know if there's a limitation or a way that we could limit the type of drive-through and exclude certain types of fast food. If there's not, I'm okay with removing the drive-through, but would like to keep the restaurants as I think that would be beneficial to the community on that side of town. As far as the building heights, we're building single-story buildings right now. And because of the conditions where we have to screen HVAC units, our parapet walls are at 24 feet. I don't have the option, or the future builders would probably not have the option, to build a two-story, 30-foot building with the other parameters that are already set in place.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Austin Birch, accounting officer for Swanson Developments at 1188 Park. I just wanted to touch, I think Joe Three did a good job answering some of the concerns from the citizens. Danny did a good job on the data behind our decision to move from office to retail. Just in our local area, we've received a 30% reduction in calls looking for office space. You know, that's the main driver in doing this to retail. You know, that benefits our business. It benefits the city in retail by the additional sales tax and other income produced by this type of business. So thank you all for listening to us and thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Anybody? I think we got everybody. No, no, sorry, can't, can't come back up, sorry. That's just part of it, the way it has to be. All right, if there is nobody else that would like to speak, we will close the public hearing. Ready for some discussion and maybe some answers on some of their questions?
And Madam Chair, I'm happy to address some of the things that were, that were brought up. So as far as a traffic signal at the intersection of Alexander and Dejarnet, I know that that's something that our Transportation Department is, is constantly looking at. I know that they reviewed a traffic study or will be reviewing a traffic study with the, the addition that, that PCA is planning. I don't have the latest on that. But I, I've texted our, our traffic engineer in the hope that he can text me back this evening.
But can I just confirm, Mr. Blomley? I mean, you don't get to just decide to put a traffic light in because it's kind of busy at that intersection or everybody has a hard time up and down the road, turning left out of there. That, there are parameters that have to be met before you can actually.
That's, that's correct. Our, our, our Transportation Department conducts a warrants analysis. And that warrants analysis has to show that there is significant enough traffic on the side street to warrant stopping traffic on the main street. And so with every new development that comes in that has an impact on that, on that intersection, they're monitoring that. And I wish I had the latest for you on that, but I, I know that that's, that's something that we very recently talked about when PCA was going through its, its latest addition, approving the plans for the latest addition. But that's something that, that the city is, is very well aware of and that we're always paying attention to that. As far as the fence, the folks were right. In the, in the 2008 plan book, there was a fence, a privacy fence that was proposed. I'm not sure exactly why that was eliminated from the. I'm not sure exactly why that was eliminated from the current pattern book, but that's certainly something that the applicant could volunteer to put back in, or the Planning Commission could condition approval on including that fence once again. As far as lighting, I think Mr. Swanson touched on this, we do have lighting standards. And any development that occurs on this property would have to conform to those standards. And we actually didn't have those standards in place back when the original plan development was approved. And now we actually have some standards with some teeth. So, for example, there is a maximum level of foot candle light spillage over the property line, so a very negligible amount allowed to spill over the property. We require maximum heights for the lighting fixtures, and we require those lighting fixtures to be pointed downward and not out, so that the light is directed to the site itself and not to adjacent properties. As far as-
And can I just confirm then?
Sure.
So that doesn't have to also be put in the Plan Book? That's required already, just as part of the city's standards?
That's correct. And one of the things that I actually talked with Mr. Roundtree about before the meeting was, you know, they are, with this pattern book, going back, or kind of defaulting the standards to our design guidelines. And so, one of the things that I, if this moves forward to City Council, would like them to do to make it clear is that anything that is not explicitly, anything that there's not explicitly an exception for in the pattern book, that it should default to all of our standard zoning regulations for commercial development and our standard design guidelines, so that everybody knows where the starting point is when they submit plans for the individual lots. They know what that baseline is that we have to look at.
Mr. Bromley, can we pull up the uses again up on the screen?
Sure. So, the ones in, that are highlighted in yellow are the new ones that they have added, or that they're proposing to add.
So, Mr. Bromley, following up on Mr. Swanson's question, is there a way to specifically remove some fast food restaurants while leaving some fast food, like a Starbucks or Dunkin' or Donut Country or something like that in, but removing McDonald's, Burger King, this, that, and the other?
Yeah. One thing that I want to distinguish is, you know, you see a number of different types of restaurants there in the list. Restaurant and carryout restaurant are permitted uses right now, and those include drive-through restaurants. And there's a difference between drive-through and drive-in. A drive-in is Sonic, essentially. The restaurant and carryout restaurant could be a restaurant with a drive-through. A specialty restaurant is a restaurant that sells food that is not a full meal. So, you know, a coffee shop, a donut shop, those would be specialty restaurants. And a specialty limited restaurant is one of those types of restaurants that does not have a drive-through. So, if they wanted to limit it to specialty restaurants, specialty limited restaurants, and restaurant and carryout restaurant minus drive, like without drive-throughs, I think that would be a possibility. I feel like I kind of talked in circles right there, but-
It would. I mean, Dunkin' and Starbucks and Dutch Brothers, they all have drive-throughs, so would that specifically take them out also?
It would not, because we would consider them a specialty restaurant.
Like you said, like, yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure people are pretty honest. But as of right now, they're already within use correct. Already, before this amendment, all of those things are already at use. We would be removing usages that are already approved.
Correct. If we took out drive-through-
They could put a McDonald's right now, but we can make it to where they can't put a McDonald's.
I'm sorry. You all had your chance to talk to us. Now, we're having our discussion, and so if you would please be so kind to just listen and let us discuss and try to figure out. And you do not get the opportunity to speak again outside of the public hearing. I apologize.
Mr. Bromley.
So, here's the list of permitted uses as it is right now, and you can see that restaurant and carryout restaurant is a permitted use in the current pattern book.
Which would include-
All of them.
McDonald's.
Yes.
Wendy's.
Yes, unless there was a specific limitation on that in this pattern book, which I have not seen. I'm happy to go through it again, but based on how we currently define restaurant and carryout restaurant, that would include drive-through restaurants.
Okay.
With that being said, I don't usually like to take rights away from people that already have rights. So, with a pattern book that's already approved that has a right, I wouldn't take a right away from somebody.
Well, for me, I was just wanting to look at the uses that would require two stories. And the height elevation is a concern. And noise is a concern, so that's why I want to look at the uses.
Yeah, even though the drawing said retail and office, they still had all the permitted uses.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the two-story was only for the, I'm sorry, Clyde, do you want to come up here? The plan is for the only two-story to be the office buildings, right? The retail won't be two-story?
That's correct, as Joe Three said, that just a one-story building with screening all the equipment gets to be about 24 feet, so there's really not a theory. It'd be tough to build a building with 30 feet and have a two-story building with our current regulations. But Jamie, to your point, they do have the ability to stagger up as they get further away from the DeJarnet out of the path.
And so, one potential solution to that is if they're basically committing to one-story buildings for those two front, for the two front A and B, they're calling them lots, but they could be multiple lots, then it could be a, the buildings could be maximum of one story, maximum of 30 feet, both of those things being, because there is, you know, we do require parapet walls to screen rooftop equipment. So, you know, we think of a one-story building as something that's, you know, 14, 16 feet tall, but like it does get taller than that once you add those parapet walls on there. So you could put both on there, max one story and max 30 feet.
Or just, wait, okay. Never mind, I'm missing something.
C and D does have a two-story.
Yes. C and, I'm showing you the 2007 Master Plan right now, and it does have, it does show that both C, D, and E are all proposed to be two-story buildings.
What you're saying with the 30-foot height, they may or may not be able to-
The 30-foot height is proposed for A and B, which is directly adjacent to DeJarnet.
But you're thinking we couldn't put that on C and D because we need screening? Is that what you're saying?
C and D have a higher maximum.
Yes, C and D have a higher, C, D, and E have a higher maximum building height.
Got it. Which is?
Which is 35 for C and D and 45 for E. So if you get farther away from the airport runway, the building heights are allowed to be taller, as proposed.
Okay. Can we talk about the buffering that lines up to the homes? That stuck out to me the most. Is it, you said two, Clyde, do you want to come back up? Why are you sitting down? You scared of me, Clyde? Well, I'm just, let's talk about the buffering. So, we're doing, tell me what we're doing again. Let's be clear.
So, along that first portion, that A section, that's a 30-foot max. And it's a Type C, but it's a double row of evergreens, and Joe Three just committed to go in, and that's-
Clyde, I think you mean B and D.
He means D, yep.
I'm sorry. Yeah, let me pull it up. I'm just running off the cuff here. Yeah, I'm sorry, not A, but B and D. So, on B, there'd be 30 feet, and that would just be a double row of evergreens. But that's mature height, Jamie, so we want to make sure of that. But to answer the question about the fence, we think it'd be more effective to add taller plant material-
Yeah, I did that.
And the evergreen to go with more of an eight-foot versus a six-foot on the install for the buffer in lieu of having the fence. It's really a wash. It's not really a financial decision. We just feel like in the long run, it'd be more effective to have the trees versus the fence for screening out those buildings. So that's a concession we're more than willing to make. And as far as, it is a double row of evergreens, so it's designed to really create a solid green wall, and over time, it does that. And then the C buffer allows, or makes us have to put a lower shrub, an evergreen shrub, and those shrubs themselves can be six feet tall. So really, the goal is to create a very dense green line with alternating green plants that provide a solid green wall in the future. So they do stair-step, like we mentioned, that with the airport, you just imagine the glide slope of an airplane. Everything we're doing is really kind of respecting that. And so, laws brought up the conflict about a 20-foot height trees and type, you know, and a 20-foot tree with a 30-foot building. But the 20-foot trees, we put that in there is because we want to make sure the developer knows that the trees that are closest to DeJarnet, which would be street trees along the roadway, that would kind of help kind of define the space, but also kind of screen the parking. Those trees will be the closest to the glide slope, so we wanted to make sure that we had a minimum of a 20-foot, or maximum of a 20-foot, to make sure those street trees would not conflict with the flight path along DeJarnet.
Clyde, can you clarify something for me? So, in your typical buffer cross-section, you are showing a fence, but a fence is not included in the text. Are y'all proposing a fence along B and D, or not proposing a fence?
We're not. We prefer us to use the taller plant material. That'd be the concession we'd like to make. I think the neighbors would appreciate taller trees versus a solid fence.
Was there a fence originally?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's, I mean, it's going to take a little time for that to mature, to be able to do that. I mean-
It does.
Yeah.
Eight-foot, if we go with eight-foot from the start, though, that gets you a ways down the line.
That's typically what we've asked developers, should you appear when they're backing up that close to a residential, is to invest in some slightly more mature landscaping? Is that okay with you guys?
I mean, I, I think I'd like to see a fence, too, but- Because it's going to take a while for this to mature. And then, you know, of course, we don't know what the layout, when we see the site plans of the parking lots, we're not going to know how this is going to get parked.
Right.
And the lights are going to be in these people's backyards, and we've done many times to keep that from happening, including on Memorial with the lights going into Adam's Place, you know? I mean, which, that's a, it's a busy street.
Yeah.
So you're asking for a fence along the entire eastern property line, Ken?
I would agree.
Yeah. Which is what it was originally.
And I don't think we ought to take the fence out.
Would they, I think typically, though, we say, we do say they can develop, build the fence with development of the phase, though, right? Would you guys be okay with that? Yeah.
I think we would require the buffer and the, if y'all, if, our normal, our normal protocol would be to require the buffer and the fence as the individual lots develop, so that-
Right.
So that they're not damaged during construction.
That's what I was clarifying, yeah. No point in putting a fence up on F if it's going to be, you know, five years before there's-
Right.
Oh, and I don't even think, are we talking about F?
Or E, sorry. Yeah, I guess you're right.
Stop at D, right?
Stop at D then, really? Yeah.
Because E kind of offsets back into the property.
Yeah, I think we stop at D, if that's okay, because that's all commentary behind that.
I don't see the point going past D.
No, that'd make it ugly, yeah.
Be to D.
That's probably pretty.
So, Mr. Bowlen also said something about shared easements, and it would impact the buffering, or can, is that true, not true?
I can speak to that, actually. GIS does show, and Mr. Roundtree probably can as well, GIS does show a variable sewer easement as well as a drainage easement along that property line of B and D. And Mr. Bowlen was asking about how the buffering would work in an easement like that. And the zoning ordinance does provide that if the city is amenable to it, the developer would have to enter an agreement with the city to put buffering in an easement area. And that would largely depend on the opinions of water resources and the stormwater people as to whether the buffering would affect the usage of the drainage easement.
Will the fence affect the drainage easement?
Right, it's possible. Looking at GIS, it looks like along the property line, it's a sewer easement, and then it's just to the west of that where there's the drainage easement, but I'm not sure if the drainage is encompassing the sewer as well. It's hard to tell.
And I would add on to that, that-
It rely on the total width of the easements.
Which one?
Looks like the sewer is 30 feet, the drainage is 20, at least that's what's listed on GIS, but again, GIS sometimes is not perfectly precise.
No, they overlap.
But they do overlap.
Typically, they overlap.
Yeah.
And I would add on to that is if they are committing to, and y'all requires a condition of approval, a certain type of buffer, and existing utilities or infrastructure does not allow them to achieve that right on the property line-
That's true.
Then they would just have to move it interior to their property so that they can still achieve that.
Correct.
And I did want to mention, as we were talking, I went back and looked through the 2007 Pattern Book regarding the drive-throughs and the development, and there's nothing that I can find that explicitly prohibits it. I think what, it may be implicit that they were not going to be included, because if you look at the concept plan from 2007 that I have on the screen, it shows multi-tenant retail buildings that they were proposing, and it does not note drive-through. That doesn't necessarily mean that one would have been precluded from beings in, say, you know, retail building A. You know, we have drive-throughs in multi-tenant commercial buildings on a pretty regular basis. So I think that, from what I can gather by looking at the 2007 Pattern Book, is that, you know, one might, one might take from looking at the Pattern Book that that was not going to be a part of the development, but I can't find anywhere that explicitly prohibits it in the Pattern Book.
Okay. So what we have, we have a PCD that was already approved. We're amending it. And tonight, we've said, we'll, they'll, we've asked them as a condition of approval, so we'll make it subject to, is I guess what I'm trying to say, mature buffering on B and D. The addition of, you all think addition of a fence on B and D, subject to MWS signing off on that, of course.
Any easement's B.
Mm-hmm. And the, actually, the removal of the drive-through restaurants from the-
Oh, I thought we said that- Did we want to remove that?
They were already allowed, so why remove them?
Well, I mean-
Well, I mean, we can. I mean, what it was-
Maybe we could limit, you know, hours of operation. I mean, like you have a drive-through dry cleaners on the end of one of these buildings.
Right.
You don't have speaker boxes or anything like that, but it's still a drive-through. And a lot of people like having a dry cleaners nearby. That's a normal-
So could we restrict B from having a restaurant and drive-through? Because B backs up to-
Only B?
Yeah.
You mean B and D?
B and D, yeah, because that's what backs up to all the rents that are here today, so I guess.
Well, Reggie, look at you with the ideas.
We would be more than willing to accommodate that.
That makes, what did you think of that, Clyde?
Yeah, that'd be great. See why I'm scaredy now. So we can, we can, we can limit it to A and C, but that helps the neighbors out. Make sure B and D, it's excluded from those uses.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
If that makes sense, Matthew. I don't know if we can get that defined in a Pattern Book, but-
Yeah, I think, I think, so, and do y'all want to leave drive-in restaurants in? That'd be like Sonic?
Not really.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Y'all, I walk to Sonic like every night from my house. Y'all are crazy. I love that Sonic off a fortress.
That's a lot of high school kids after school. You've got to be careful.
Okay, so let me get this right. My motion-
Oh, have you?
I thought we, sorry, I thought we covered everything. Did we miss something?
Well, there was a question about the detention-retention pawn. I'm assuming it's at Bradford Place, and then how this development would either feed into it or affect it, or-
It's already, I mean, it's already developed. It's already feed, I mean, it's already developed, so it's, the pond's just holding water, and they're worried about the mosquitoes, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's a global pond, it drains a pretty large area.
Gotcha.
Right. But it's meant to hold water.
Not indefinitely, it's designed to hold it for a certain amount of time, and then eventually-
Until it spills off.
Correct, or percolates in.
Is that on y'all's property, or is it on their property?
It's on ours.
Okay.
It's the one in the back.
But we can't close it, we can't get rid of it, it's not, yeah.
It's, and, and they're, you know, like they mentioned, it's approved, it's constructed, there were, it went through the, you know, review of construction plans, and so it's, it's there, the, the pond is there.
Okay, all right.
Then the purpose of the pond is to hold water, so it's just, I mean, it decreases the velocities on the outflow, correct?
Correct, it is, it controls the release, and allows for sediment to perk into it, and your goal is to slow down the water so it's not eroding, and also to slow it down and also that some of it perks back into the aquifer.
So without the pond, there could be erosion, higher velocity in the water, yeah, so it's serving a purpose, so.
Okay, I, I didn't find any other items on here, did anybody else have any other questions or anything, and Ms. Everwater's going to try to put a motion together for it?
I think so. So we are, I'm making a motion to approve subject to the addition of the fence along the property lines of B and D to the mature type C buffering, to the restriction of drive-through on lots B and D-
And drive-in.
-and drive-ins on all-
No, just-
On B and D.
Yep. Six-foot fence?
Standard is six-foot?
It was a six-foot in the-
Six-foot fence.
Six-foot fence with, with eight-foot plantings.
That's exactly what I said, Matthew, thank you.
And the type C buffer that you referenced, is that just along B and D, or A, B, C and D?
B and D.
B and D.
The mature buffering on B and D.
And then also, would your motion be subject to all other staff comments?
Absolutely, it's subject to other staff comments, thank you, John.
And, and would the fence be in addition to the standard plantings in-
Would you all like to make the motion?
I'm just trying to read your mind.
Say that again, in addition to-
The fence would be, because, because our, and, and not to get too technical, but our zoning ordinance allows, if you add a fence, you get to subtract 50% of the, of the plantings. I'm assuming that y'all don't want that to happen, you want the fence to be in addition to the-
Just have the fence on top of it.
Okay.
Can we remove, can we go to type B buffer then with mature trees versus having the shrubs, because that nullifies these for the shrubs if the fence is there?
Oh, you're saying the fence is going to block all the shrubs anyway?
Yeah, and that's just an added expense that won't really benefit the neighbors at all if the fence is in place.
Well, what, what does, what's B, does it still have the double?
B will still have the evergreens, right? The double layer of evergreens, just not the decorative shrubs.
Correct.
And not as wide?
Uh, B is only 10 feet wide.
Compared to, what is it?
Twenty.
C is 12.
Oh, 12.
C is 12?
Yeah, D is 15, E is 20, A and B are 10.
So we're going from 12 to 10 by going to the B?
Yeah, let me look at the cross-section of-
Oh, my goodness. Almost had the motion. I'm so good.
Matt, Matthew started asking questions.
That's a lot of motion, that's a lot in my motion, you're making the motion now, okay?
I had to interject, didn't I?
Hold on, write it down.
I'm trying.
And, and while y'all are doing that-
Can she just say she makes a motion to do everything she already said, and whatever?
So long as Ashley has the, the motion down properly, yes.
Has the recording going, right?
Ashley's like, I'm new here?
So, so y'all have got the, I've got the buffer cross-sections, you can see that the primary difference between type B and type C is that type B is 10 feet wide, type C is 12 feet wide, both have double rows of evergreen plantings, and, but type C also has the, the row of shrubs in there too, so it's three layers instead of two.
And now we're going to have three layers with a fence instead of two, two layers.
Then I think that makes sense. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yep. So you want to edit your motion to add that?
Sure.
Fence, type B, what else are we doing? Limiting the uses on B and D.
And y'all don't want any buffer on the other side?
There's already stand, there's already C over there, right?
Good, right.
So when you say the other side, you mean A?
I mean, it's vacant over there on the-
Western property?
Correct.
It's type C already, they put type C on it, didn't they?
So we're standing here saying we don't want any buffers over there.
No, 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 it's type C along A and C.
What they had proposed, there's the language that they have in their, in their plan, it says, it, it was a type C in the existing pattern book, but they're, they're saying that the buffer will not be installed until lots are developed to prevent potentially unnecessary buffers along the western property line. I think they probably, I think they probably need to, to specify that they will plant buffers as if this were CH, according to whatever that ends up being zoned in the future.
Yeah, I just didn't want them to go away completely.
So if it, if this ends up getting, if the property next door ends up getting rezoned to CH, they won't be on the hook for a buffer, but if it stays RS-15 and develops RS-15, they'd be required to do a type D buffer.
Holly was working with us on this, and she felt like, you know, there's a high probability it's going to go commercial, so that's why she asked us to kind of put that comment in there.
I think it's good, it provides them with flexibility, but I think we need to make sure we get the language right.
I know, Ms. Everwater's got, perfect, ready to go.
Anything else?
Then we're good.
Go for it. All right. Motion to approve with addition of the fence along lots B and D, moving it to a type B buffer, removal of the drive-throughs on lot B and D, subject to utility approval and all staff comments. Done?
And that's-
And the drive-through, drive-in.
Easements.
And drive-ins.
Well, the utility approval of the easements.
Yeah, and, and removal of drive-throughs and drive-ins on B and D.
And drive-ins.
Yep.
I'll get this next time, try again.
Dog-eared, flat-top.
Is that a second?
Second, or Ken, don't matter.
Okay, Ms. Fulgham, we have a motion, and maybe second, check the role, please.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Leister Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you all very much for coming out tonight, appreciate all your comments, appreciate your participation, thank you. Okay, our next item business is staff reports and other business, we do have one item on here tonight, and that is the mandatory referral for the dedication of an electric easement on city-owned property located along West College Street, Old Nashville Highway. Middle Tennessee Electric is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for a dedication of a Middle Tennessee Electric easement on pro, two parcels that the city owns, it's actually property that's adjacent to the College and Thompson intersection where the bridge goes over College Street. Middle Tennessee Electric would like to put the electric underground through that, through that area, and they need easements on our two parcels, which are this and this, and we would recommend approval subject to our standard comments that I will not read for the sake of expediency.
Second. She already made the motion.
Oh, move for approval.
Second.
Second?
We have a-
I don't know what's going on.
Have a second, Ms. Fulgham, please.
Just, I'm sorry, just to be clear, that motion was subject-
All staff comments.
And second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Leister Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, motion passes, and Mr. Tully, I believe you have an introduction to make for us tonight.
Yes, sitting next, next to me is the newest addition to Legal Department, our new staff attorney, Macy Wolt.
All right.
Hi, Macy, welcome to the team.
And, and so you're going to be at planning commission?
Oh, I, I'll still be covering planning commission, but Macy will be backing me up from time to time, as, as well as, well, many other duties is assigned.
Yes, that's always, well, welcome.
You're the new David Ives in She's Singing Roman? So cute.
Perhaps.
Okay, did we have any other business tonight that we need to take care of? Okay, if not, we stand adjourned.